Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April 9th meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Would you please stand with us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, ever since the birth of
May we entertain a motion, please, to move out of executive session? All in favor? Board members, you've had a chance to take a look at the agenda. We do have one change under Roman numeral three, letter A. We are not going to do the Science Olympiad recognition this, tonight. I believe that's the only change I'm aware of. So with that being said, may we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you. Paul's second. All in favor? Thank you. We provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. We ask that any comments be no longer than five minutes, and they be related to school matters. Personnel matters, whether directly or indirectly, will not be discussed in public. If you do have a personnel concern, it can be addressed in writing to the board. So with that being said, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the board tonight? Okay, we'll move on. And let us have our student liaisons. Well, Thomas always goes first. Should we keep with that tradition?
Sure. Good evening, board members. Last night Webster Thomas held its National Honor Society induction, where seventy-four juniors and three seniors were inducted into this prestigious organization. Thank you, Mr. Sefoletto, for attending and personally congratulating each one of us.
You're welcome.
Tomorrow is the last day of the third marking period. Our seniors are finding it difficult to believe that these are their final weeks of high school. They are starting the quarter off next Monday with a new tradition they created, Senior Week. The seniors have divided themselves into teams and are competing to have the most spirit amongst their classmates. They will be dressing up in different themes each day. Monday is Senioritis Day, so that just rolled out of bed luck. Tuesday, superheroes versus villains. Wednesday, dress to impress. Thursday, best t-shirt day. And Friday, destination day. They are to wear college, military, or career apparel. Each day, each team will tweet a picture of their group into a panel of judges. The week ends with a lock-in for senior class on Friday night. That yes, that's right, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 AM Saturday morning, our senior class will not leave Thomas. It will be a great opportunity to have fun bonding with their classmates. Also to celebrate the spring in this final phase of the school year, our Thomas Care Team, Student Council, and PTSA are joining together to sponsor a Spring Spirit Week from April 20th through the 25th. The fourth quarter care theme is excellence. We will have a different groups of students delivering morning show public service announcements about what excellence might look like in the classroom, extracurricular activities, in our families, and in our community. Each day will be different dress-up days, with each class earning tickets for the most participation. Students can earn tickets for demonstrating excellence in different ways. Prizes will be awarded to students whose names are drawn from each class buckets. The week culminates on Saturday, April 25th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00, where we will be celebrating Earth Day by cleaning out our courtyards and planting flowers. Our PTSA will be serving hot dogs and ice cream to our participants. So as you're hearing, these next few weeks may look a little strange at Thomas if you were to walk through our hallways. Spring sports are just getting underway. Our baseball team is 1-0, with their second game being played today. Softball is 1-0, boys lacrosse is 1-1, and girls lacrosse opens up league play tonight against Churchville. Tennis is 0-1, and track begins next week. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and we can get the rest of the games in. Next week, our music department will host the Kaleidoscope Concert on Tuesday evening, which is our choral, concert, and select choirs, as well as elementary and middle school choirs. Our jazz band and jazz ensemble will perform on Thursday night. Thank you. Can I answer any questions?
Is Mr. Weeder going to serve breakfast at the lock-in?
I have no idea. I'm sorry. I think so, though. Probably.
It's a long night.
He is now.
I thought you were serving.
That's it?
I thought you were serving.
I am now.
I'm not sure. I can get back to you on that, though.
But you can tell him what you're doing.
Thanks, Mary.
Good evening, board members. I'm Lindsay Fayeat. The third quarter is coming to an end, and everyone is very excited to begin the fourth, as it is a step closer to the end of the year. Senior Kyle Higgs and teacher Diane DeGravio were selected as finalists to speak in Allendale, Columbia's annual TED Talks. The event was held on March 7th, and both Kyle and Diane talked to a crowd of about a hundred about this year's topic worth spreading around, sparks. Sixty-three Webster students passed the national test for Microsoft Office, forty-nine of them Schrader students. These students are now certified by Microsoft Office as user specialists in Microsoft Word. On March 9th, the Schrader programming team took second place at the annual Westminster High School Programming Contest in New Wilmington, Pennsylvania. Then, on April 7th, the team won a smart watch for each member for being the first to submit a correct solution during the annual Cornell High School Programming Contest at Cornell University. On April 25th, Peter Wood, Kyle Zhao, Christopher Yee, Robin Roger, and Selena Zhang will attend the New York State Math League competition as a part of the Monroe County Teams. The competition will be held at Cisette High School in Cisette, New York. The Monroe County Teams were chosen based on performance throughout the Monroe County Math League Session, with the top thirty-five students from the county invited to attend. Two Schrader seniors were recognized at the 2015 Student Artist Auditions, sponsored by the Rochester Philharmonic League. David Wendling was runner-up for the Nobel Hurst Award for Male Vocalist as a baritone, and Helen Wong won both the Ruth and Sidney Salesman Award for Strings, a $500 prize, and the Aldridge Tinker Scholarship for Instrumentalist, which is $1,000 if she plans on majoring in music next year. She won both of these for her talent in violin. Sophomore Jeanne Hurst won second place and a $200 cash prize in the Rochester Public Library's annual socle literary contest for her prose competition. Usually, the school of the arts wipes out the competition, so this is a huge accomplishment. And lastly, Schrader senior, Robin McCarty, a current AP Spanish student, will be attending the upcoming academic year as a Rotary Exchange student in Bolivia. She went through the application and interview process in order to earn this spot. As a part of the exchange, she will not only attend school and live with a family in Bolivia, but will act as a Rotary Goodwill Ambassador representing the Webster and Rochester area. She will interact with other exchange students and make presentations throughout her trip about the community here in the United States. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Now, I do want to mention one thing about the National Honor Society induction last night at Thomas. There was young, one young man who had taken eight Regents exams and scored a hundred on five of them. Very impressive. I think the average academic for the seventy-seven people that were inducted last night was a ninety-four. Very, very impressive. Well, two weeks ago, the YEA, or the Young Entrepreneur Academy, held an investors' panel where students pitched their businesses to community investors. Now, a couple of facts about the YEA. The YEA is an elective in our high school that provides a focused introduction to the business world. The goal of all YEA classes is for each student to successfully launch their own business. Now, I'd like to read a couple of things from the actual YEA website, because it highlights two of our alumni, Katie and Christina Lantau. Katie and Christina, in 2007, started a jewelry business called Bead Nick. The two sisters sold do-it-yourself beading kits and pre-made jewelry, as well as hosting birthday parties that were all about beads for girls of all ages. Before the program, the sisters both knew very little about what it took to launch an idea or a business. YEA ignited the entrepreneurial spirit in them, and they quickly caught the business bug. Christina went on a couple of years later to use the skills she mastered in the program to create a social movement called Kicks for Kids. By exciting the local community and school districts, Christina sent four hundred pounds of shoes to orphanages in the Dominican Republic and garnered partnerships with Lowell's and JetBlue Airways. Thanks to Christina's efforts, children in the Dominican orphanage now have a shoe supply to last nearly fifteen years. Katie says, "Throughout the YEA program, I learned not only the necessary skills to turn an idea into a reality, but I gained confidence. I learned the importance of discovering my passions, and I became inspired to create positive change." Katie, who is currently pursuing a master's degree in urban education reform. "I had the opportunity to witness this year's investor panel, and in my opinion, it was one of the best I've ever seen, and I believe all the students did a super great job." And actually, we have a couple of highlights. So, Paul? He's not back there. Lizzy? Could you show us some of the highlights?
Good evening, and welcome to the sixth annual Webster Young Entrepreneurs Academy Investor Presentation Event. Shortly, twenty-three young aspiring entrepreneurs from both Webster Thomas and Webster Schrader, representing eleven businesses, will take the stage to pitch their ideas and their passions.
Hello. My name is Matt Fiore, the CMO of Easy Trash. I have background in customer service and marketing throughout my working career in the restaurant business.
Hello. My name is Cam Isaac, and I'm the CEO of Easy Trash. I am a natural leader, a people person, and a logical problem solver, which qualifies me for this position.
Hello. I'm Kevin Hill, CFO of Easy Trash. I have a strong background in mathematics, and I'm a very detail-specific person. After much brainstorming and research, we developed an aluminum lightweight product that hooks recycling bins on the main garbage tote for an easy and efficient time in garbage night, or garbage morning for procrastinators.
Fantastic presentation. First of all, you did a great job. Have you thought of trademarking the name Easy Trash? And if you haven't, I would.
Yeah, we haven't really looked into it yet, but like we said, we'd like to get into the protection of things such as the name and the design. We are actually in the process of filing for the provisional patent now, and we have the application underway, so.
Good evening, panelists. I am the CEO of Essence Technologies. Through my passion for technology and business, I have created Essence Technologies, a mobile application company.
At No-Brainer Containers, we customize retainer cases with an endless variety of stickers to appeal to children and teens who have a mouthguard, a retainer, or an invisalign.
We market to people who host social gatherings, as well as those who need to buy gifts for others. Currently, Cake My Day has rack cards, business cards, and punch cards to hand out to potential buyers.
Now, you may be wondering what the post-boost option is. On social media accounts, you have the ability to pay essentially to have your posts sent out to more than just your followers. You can pick a demographic, and anyone who has that category checked off in their profile will come across the post.
The same approach will be applied to high school, but I would want to start selling the bookmarks to a teamer club as a way of advertisement. As exemplified by the chart, one unit is one bookmark with a charm. The company will be selling each bookmark for $6, and will have a gross profit of $2.56.
Nice presentation, Kyle.
Thank you.
My question is, have you had contact with paint stores, and what have you been?
I have reached out to Art Stop. They have no product like it. I'm going to set up a communication and a connection with them once we have produced our products. We plan to get it into smaller paint stores for sales on the floor.
To start our business, we're going to focus on the first product, the fluoride, and getting it to the market. Our business goals, financials, and marketing strategy are based on the fluoride product. Our short-term goals include selling ninety units by the end of the year through our website, social media, and through word of mouth.
Large pieces can be delivered at an extra cost to the customer through my personal vehicle or rented U-Haul truck. In order to be as successful as possible, I have set some long-term and short-term goals. I will need to find many quality pieces to work on.
Thanks, guys. Hi, I'm Diamond Gardner, the creator of Ira Apparel. During the stages of coming up with ideas, I got suggested to make lacrosse pennies by our old classmate, Andy Ride. I then took the suggestion and expanded with it. I had played lacrosse for three years, and a common problem with playing lacrosse is losing your mouthguard. So we created the Ira Apparel Penny, which has a pocket to store your mouthguard in.
Tonight, a total of $5,600 has been invested in the next generation of Webster's business leaders. Thank you to all the investors and your time. This group that wins tonight will compete with other semifinalists from the Northeast on May 7th and 8th in Rochester. Five finalists from the semifinalists around the country will then compete in Washington, D.C. in June for an opportunity to win more college scholarships, business startup prize packages, and the opportunity to present on Shark Tank. The judges tonight were asked to select the business group not just based on dollars amount, but on the merit of their business, their idea, and their presentation. It is my pleasure to announce that Easy Trash has been selected as a semifinalist. Congratulations to all of our businesses. You've done a fantastic job and impressed all of us. You should be very proud of your efforts, and certainly very excited to see where your businesses will take you. Thank you again to all the supporters of YEA for helping make this evening possible.
Well, to tell us a little bit more about YEA, we have Eric and Scott, and Cake My Day founder Gabby. We'll let Gabby start off, because she's the star of the show.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gabby, and my business was Cake My Day. Should we just let me tell like what it is?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I started in May of 2013, so I started before I joined YEA. Pretty much make and sell cake pops, which is like a bite-sized ball of cake on a stick. And I saw them to like graduation parties and different events like that.
Gabby will also have a booth at the Webster Community Arts Day, which I'm sure everybody will be around. You can stop by and sample one or purchase one. Gabby also is being a little shy. She was overfunded in her Ask Price, and it also was awarded a $500 shopping spree to Sam's Club for business supplies. So we brought Sam's Club on as a corporate sponsor through YEA, and one of the businesses at each site was allocated, or that money was allocated, and Gabby was our big winner, so that's great. First of all, we want to thank not only the Webster Central School District and the Webster Community Chamber of Commerce. It seems we're going into our sixth year, or we are finishing our sixth year of YEA. Brought it into the district with a grant, and now we have investors, we have many, many people in our business community, and our community helping not only as business mentors, guest speakers, site visits, investors. I mean, the list goes on and on. They really embrace these students wholeheartedly, so if you guys know anybody else, we can hit up. I'll see you after the board meeting. But as I said, we're entering into our, or finishing off our sixth year. We've started, we've launched sixty-eight student-run businesses with over one hundred and twenty-two students, awarded over $35,000 in startup funds, and students have earned over $130,000 in scholarship offers throughout this program over the last, the last six years. My counterpart, Mary Pat Kanen, is unable to make it. She's home ill, but have something to, she sent me a little quote to read, and she said what the business, what the video didn't show is the buzz after the presentation. Gabby was offered by, was offered a certified kitchen to use. Our Schrader librarian who's involved with that was offered a retail spot for Jordan's bookmarks. The president of Vision Auto connected with the social media group, and then the Easy Trash guys had quite a crowd around them. So they're moved on to the regional competition on May 7th and 8th at Harris Beach, and hopefully we can push those guys onto the, onto the regional ones.
Speaking from the program at the district level, Scott and Mary Pat do a great job of collaborating across the district, not only the two high schools, but across the community as well. Out at the Chamber of Commerce, working with businesses throughout the community to get sponsorships, and not just the financial sponsorships coming in during the investor panel, but also countless sponsors who are taking on mentors, just those shadow pieces. Those are the things that the students remember the most, is those times that they get to go out in the community and go to a professional studio and be trained in public speaking prior to the event. Things like that really stick with the students, and we hear great feedback from them. The other, the three gentlemen from Easy Trash weren't able to make it here tonight because they're all lacrosse players at Pittsford, and was checking Twitter before he hopped up here. And Cam actually scored one goal within one minute of the game, so I think he'll be happy to say that he was, made a good choice to go there instead of coming here. But they, they're, I actually just ran into him today while I was at Thomas, and they're in the process of working through those patent pieces, and they would be able to sell as many as they can make. Everyone who saw the product and everyone who hears about it goes, "I'll take one of those."
I would, I would have bought one right then and there.
And all of my neighbors will take one as soon as they see me put it out there, not have to make two trips out to the curb every night. So it's really a great program. We look forward to the event every, every spring, and if you get an opportunity to come out to Community Arts Day, or to, May 2nd, they'll be at the trade show at Eastview Mall. You can see not only the Webster businesses, but also all the businesses from around the area. We're the, one of the only sites left in the area, I think we are the only site left that's run through the school, where the students receive credit for it. The students don't have to participate with a fee. On every other location, the students have to pay a fee to participate, and they have, they've got to go out of school, that's after, at night. So ours is a much more of a unique program in that way. And we've actually been contacted by the National YEA office quite a few times to speak with other Chamber of Commerce and other school districts about how we run our setup, as they're trying to spread this throughout the USA. We're a model flagship for them.
Questions from the board?
Not, not a question, but I sit on the Chamber of Commerce board, and the, this year's event got tremendous kudos from Barry Howard, who is our representative on the panel. So you all got great feedback, and they felt that some of the suggestions they had shared last year were accepted happily, and they really were appreciative of that. So I hope that we get to see you at a Chamber breakfast. I know we've done that also in the past, so. Thank you.
I think it's an amazing job that you guys do, bringing these young kids forward and introducing them to the business world. I've already signed up with Jacks McDonald and his social media company. He's got me. So we're just starting that, which I think is amazing. And for the price tag that's on there, it's really going to be a great thing for my business. And so I got a couple of questions for Gabby. How many flavors do you make?
I have fifteen flavors.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. What are you selling for? You know, I'm a cake guy. Look at that. I eat a lot of cake.
Right now, I sell them by the dozen, so depending on what flavor, it's $10 to $15 a dozen, but I'm excited for Community Arts Day, because it's going to be the first time that I sell them individually.
Cool. Did you raise your price individually for that?
I'll probably do like $2 for one, or $1.50, something like that.
Fantastic. Do you have logos and signs and everything else made up?
Yeah, I have all of that.
Fantastic. Would that qualify for the Cupcake Cook-Off or any of that stuff? Well, Cupcake Wars, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I love that show. Pop Wars.
Yeah, exactly.
Hit up Mr. Guston for some sign, signage.
I thought I could do some.
Thanks, Paul.
Do young kids come in for their glasses? You know, they can get a little cupcake?
I think we're going to work on something. Gabby, come see me afterwards.
Rent out space on his head.
I'll sell you this side of the hat, right? For advertising. Just give me a dozen of those things, and you can have this side, all right? That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike, Paul, anything?
No. Great. And I'm a big fan of Shark Tank, so I can just only imagine what that was like here. It was pretty nice.
Yeah, I mean, to see the students grow throughout the, you know, the inception of the business or social movement onto, you know, presenting in front of, in front of a panel, you know, it's quite a growth process.
That's great.
You know, I know, I'm going to put Gabby on the spot again. It was, you know, we practiced in school and in front of the class, and, you know, I think was a little nervous, and, you know, the day of the event, she knocked it out of the park, so it was pretty rewarding.
And as one of the new investors came in, he said, was, oh, I didn't realize, I thought it was just going to be a panel of the seven or ten people on the panel, but we're in this auditorium, and it's the panel, and then probably fifty to a hundred people sitting behind them. So it's a little bit more nerve-wracking, this presenting to seven people on a panel or a classroom full of folks, so it's a, it's a big event.
Great.
I don't have any questions. It's just a great experience for the kids, you know, much, sometimes much more relevant than sitting in the classroom learning, you know, listening to a teacher. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Just a great experience for kids, and we really appreciate the fact that you're able to do this. And I'm looking forward to Saturday. Now, how many are you going to have there?
I'm going to have three flavors. I'll have Fun Fuddy, chocolate, and cookies and cream.
But how many are you going to have?
Probably...
She's coming in late. She wants to know if she can get it. I was going to discuss it today.
Yeah, I'm actually still trying to figure it out. I have to make them once I get home from this.
Couple hundred.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. At least. I've done, actually, I have done weddings. I mean, people do.
Wedding cake, like, tastes like wedding cake?
Oh.
What does wedding cake taste like?
Yeah.
Well, it's good.
Doesn't it taste like regular cake?
It's like regular cake, white cake.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm simple, man.
Then, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
A lot of redneck weddings in Wayne County could probably get these.
Well, we were very impressed with your performance, Gabby, and we would like to give you a recognition award for the job you did at the investors' panel, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to talk.
You know, you mentioned you've contacted the Instant Biz. I also thought our, we should take a look at them and see if they could not help us with our social media, because it's a younger, and, and I talked, I talked with them, and, you know, I offered them an opportunity, so.
Yeah.
It was funny. He had a different idea a year ago, and he presented it to me. I know him with the family, and it wasn't a money, but this thing, what he's doing this year is amazing.
Yep.
I just think it's awesome.
And, you know, they had to present a business plan and everything in front of these people, and, you know, they go through it, so it's really, really a great thing.
Well, yeah, just the video.
Yep.
They were very professional.
Wasn't it great to see them all dressed up, too?
Yes.
Dress code.
All right, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mike. I would like to begin my report this evening by congratulating two special teachers for being named the 2014-15 Oak Tree Award winners. Marcy Adams of State Road is the elementary-level recipient, and Karen Gillan of Spry is a secondary recipient. The Oak Tree Award is co-sponsored each year by the Webster Teachers Association and Webster's PTSA, and recognizes excellence in teaching. Marcy and Karen will both be celebrated during a board meeting next month. Congratulations to both Marcy and Karen. And you know, it's officially springtime in Webster. When we celebrate Community Arts Day, be sure to bring the entire family to Schrader High School this Saturday in forty-eight hours, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for, this is the 39th Annual Community Arts Day. The event is sponsored by the Central PTSA and showcases student artwork and community talents, including exhibits, and carnival games, and crafts, and outstanding live performances and demonstrations throughout the day. And I will be hanging out at Gabby's cake pop stand, that's for sure, trying to make sure I get something before Mr. Guston buys her out. Community Arts Day would not be possible without an army of PTSA volunteers from our eleven schools, and thanks to everyone for making this such a highly anticipated, community-wide celebration of the arts. April 11th is also a big day for two of our Odyssey of the Mind teams. Teams from both Tom, from both Thomas and Schrader High Schools scored high enough during the regional tournament a few weeks ago to earn a trip to the state competition this Saturday at Binghamton University. My alma mater, go Bearcats. For those of you who may not know, Odyssey of the Mind is an international problem-solving competition in which students work together on teams to creatively solve problems, including everything from building their own vehicles to putting on a dramatic performance. We wish all of our students the best as they travel to the States, getting closer and closer to the world championship competition. Next, a schedule reminder for all of our parents. There is an upcoming superintendent's conference day on Monday, April 27th. School will be in session for the high school students, grades nine, twelve. However, students in grades K-8, elementary and middle, will be off that day, April 27th, so please plan accordingly for your children. If you need reference to the, if you need to reference the school calendar for the remainder of this year, or the new 15-16 calendar, please visit our website, which is on your screen, at websterschools.org, and click on the calendar dropdown menu. Thanks, Paul. And then finally, in just a few minutes, we're going to be spending some time ta- which is on your screen, at websterschools.org and click on the Calendar drop-down menu. Thanks, Paul. And then finally, in just a few minutes, we're gonna be spending some time talking with Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Brian Freeman, about the state budget that was officially released last week and that, and how that affects our district's financial plan for the fifteen, sixteen school year. I do wanna take this opportunity to remind you to continue advocating for our students by visiting the advocacy quicklink page on our website, which you can see on your screen. I'd also like to encourage you to exercise your right to vote on the district's annual budget vote and school board election on Tuesday, May nineteenth, from six AM to nine PM at the Schrader Gymnasium. Uh, there are also absentee ballot applications currently available on our website, um, and that ends my report for this evening.
Thank you, Karen. You had a great introduction for Brian, but I'm scared when I see the thickness of that booklet you're carrying up.
Gotta be a four-inch. Just prepared for anything. Well, good evening, everyone. This is our first time together since our aid runs have been released, so I'll probably spend a bulk of the time going over that and what that means for the district, giving you an update on our latest projection, what the tax rate would be with several different scenarios, and an overview of how that state aid affected, um, some of the things we were thinking about and looking forward to, uh, for the fifteen, sixteen school year. First up, our foundation aid. Uh, we received the smallest legal increase. Uh, we were not alone in that. Uh, many of our fellow districts received the, uh, point three-seven percent over fourteen, fifteen aid. For us, that is a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollar increase. That was the norm, uh, across, across the county, uh, when it comes to the foundation aid. You know, on a, uh, twenty-seven million dollar foundation aid package right now, it was not a significant increase for us. Gap Elimination Adjustment Restoration. We were restored, uh, a little over two-point-three million dollars, um, still leaving us a little over four million dollars, um, heading into now sixteen, seventeen school year. We received a base minimum of thirty-five-point-six percent restoration for a CWR, which is a Combined Wealth Ratio. It's the leading economic indicator that the state uses, one, uh, being average for the state. Any way less than one-point-eight, got thirty-five-point-six. So for that, that was about two-point-two million for us. Then we received a additional sixty thousand, two-hundred-one dollars in restoration from four other formula calculations. They ran every district through a four-tier formula system. Uh, one had to do with your K six, uh, three-year free and reduced lunch rate, uh, you got some additional funds for that. Uh, one had to do with how many limited English proficiency students you had. Uh, one had to do, focused on your extraordinary needs counts of students that are combination free and reduced and also some other economically challenging situations. And then, the last was an interesting enrollment change, uh, was the fourth tier. If you were, had a two percent or greater enrollment change, or a two percent or less, uh, or more, going negative, you received, uh, extra five-hundred or six-hundred dollars per kid in that enrollment change. Uh, we were smack dab in the middle, so we received nothing for that. So totaling up those four tiers, when you put our numbers through, we don't have a lot of students driving those categories for us, and the amounts were, were quite minimal, uh, anyways, that you would be multiplying by to get that. So, our total GEA, um, worked out, um, to be about thirty-six percent restored from last year. Our expense-based formulas, our building aid and transportation aid were off significantly. I know, um, the, the aid runs came out, uh, late on, on Tuesday, early Wednesday morning, but we did not receive the backup to any of the expense-based formulas or the backup to the gap elimination adjustment till Monday morning. Um, so I, you couldn't really see how those formulas changed until then. Um, so I, as I'll explain, going forward, I, I was not able to reconcile right away some of the numbers, 'cause they didn't make sense, um, knowing what we had known just a couple of months previous to the way the formulas were calculated. So with that, we'll take a look at what our state aid is. And I, I've given you a little bit of a history here, um, for, for reference purposes. The first column you'll see right here is the original governor's proposal from last year, looking into fourteen, fifteen as a frame of reference for you. Uh, those numbers should look, uh, somewhat familiar. Uh, when you go back, you see our gap elimination and what the governor proposed last year for us, just to restore a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, uh, bringing our GEA to a little over seven million. Then the next column is what the legislative proposal was, uh, for fourteen, fifteen, and you can see the discrepancy right here. Um, the legislator added a significant fund, uh, amount of money to the GEA to bring that down for us as we headed into fourteen, fifteen, giving us that benchmark of, well, we say we're still short six, uh, point-three million dollars. Now, this had been the historical pattern and going into the budget season now, it, it had been happening for about three years. The governor said X, legislature said no Y, and you'd get Y. So that had been the pattern. So we would assume in January, governor would say X, come March, it would be Y, and we could plan going forward for the same kind of, uh, practice moving forward. Well, this year went slightly different, when, you know, X never happened in January and we just got Y, uh, six days ago. So then, to show you, in the third column here, is what was actually budgeted for, for the district in fourteen, fifteen. Uh, if you notice, BOSI's aid right there, cross, um, was assumed less. A lot of the times, um, this is all, our expense-based aids are based on what we spend, and the state doesn't always have the most up-to-date, best information on what we spend, we do. So you can manipulate those down, 'cause you know you're not going to get that amount, and you don't wanna leave yourself short. And then for your reference also, I've included, what did we actually get for this year, once all the final state aids are, some, forms are submitted in September and our state aid is released to us throughout the fourteen, fifteen year, as a benchmark for you, as a reference. So getting into fifteen, sixteen, this column here that I've highlighted with the blue highlights, um, you see our foundation aid, our small increase, um, our high cost excess, our private excess cost, what our BOSI's aid was, and I, I could tie all those out. The problem was with what I highlighted here in blue, the building aid and the transportation aid. I, I could not resolve until the formulas showed up. And what ended up happening is, you can see, I've, what I've budgeted for us is, is less, um, by about three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. Two main reasons. On the building aid, um, we actually, surprisingly, had an aid ratio increase, which we fully won't know why until the formulas in the fall come out, once all the numbers are put through. We were planning, when you run the numbers last time, to actually have an aid reduction in building aid. That ratio that we're reimbursed by about two percent, actually went north a little, a little bit by one percent. Um, so, so we were jumping that, that number because of that. The reason why I'm still, we're still short a hundred and seven, um, every five years, the district is, has to do a building condition survey. Last time we did one, it was twenty-ten. Uh, we are due for one in twenty-fifteen. You can do that in the last half of fourteen, fifteen, or the first half of fifteen, sixteen. We're planning to do that in the first half of fifteen, sixteen. The state is aiding us, assuming we're doing it in the last half of fourteen, fifteen, and that money would be coming in fifteen, sixteen. Well, in essence, it's not. We're gonna do it next year, school year fifteen, sixteen. That aid will come in sixteen, seventeen. It was put into the building aid proposal, but it's not really going to happen. So that's why I'm planning on a hundred and seven thousand dollars less for building aid. With transportation, uh, very similar, a lot of it is based on estimates of what we're expending in thirteen, fourteen. A large part of that has to do with the way we purchase our buses and the debt payment schedule against those buses. One of the payments is an assumed payment, uh, based on our historical, they're, you're assuming we're going to be making this payment when we're really making this payment. Um, so the difference is, um, the two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars is what was assumed versus what's really going to happen. So that's why that also was, was brought down from what you see on the governor's So, everything else, we'll take at, um, dollar-for-dollar value from what the proposal, and I should, I misspoke, I shouldn't say the governor's proposal, I should say the joint proposal between the governor and the legislature this year. When you add it all up, we're due a little over forty-three million. The UPK, it gets added to our state aid, but we have to take that out. That is actually a grant, um, that we account for outside of our general fund monies. It's counted for in the special aid fund, like a federal grant would be. Um, so that, uh, never gets counted in our state aid. Any questions on that, uh, as you're looking at it? Okay. So really, our state aid summary, it, it's a decrease of a decrease disguised as an increase in aid. We still are significantly short of our aid levels in oh-eight, oh-nine. Uh, we now have the largest GEA, our Gap Elimination Adjustment, in the county. And really, you, you break it down into your operating aids and your expense-based aids. Really, the only operating aid we have is foundation aid. So the foundation aid and the GEA restoration are pretty much what pay for us. You have a first-grade class and a first-grade teacher, that pays for that. You wanna teach high school AP, American History, that's what pays for that. Um, we don't have a state aid line that says first-grade reimbursement, like you do if you, for BOSI's or transportation or building it. So that's why I like to make that difference between what's an operating aid, what do we need to keep going, versus what's an expense-driven aid. Um, so those operating aids increased by two-point-four million more than last year, uh, but those, uh, that three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand is really a phantom, uh, in expense-based aids that we will not be getting. Little, the explanation is that ratio difference and the building condition survey that will not arrive until sixteen, seventeen. In all other areas, you have to spend it to get it, uh, when it comes to state aid. Foundation aid is the only one that's not tied to really what you're spending, uh, to get it back.
Question on the, um, largest GEA gap in the county, and that's derived from the formula, and that's just the way the numbers fell for us.
Correct.
So we still have a large gap.
And actually, if you notice, the next slide shows where we're at, uh, as a little over four million dollars. And I, I, as a point of clarification, many other districts in the county only received about thirty-six percent, right there at the same ratio with us. Um, but because of our size, that left more on the table for us. Unfortunately, the two districts that are larger than us in the county had vastly different scenarios when the formulas played out for them, uh, and restored almost all of their, their foundation, or not their foundation aid, their GEA to them.
And I do think it's, it's very important for, for us to, to clarify, especially for our, um, our community members and our taxpayers, that this GEA for us right now is four million dollars. So we still have, or the state still has four million dollars of taxpayer money that they've been holding on to, um, or that they will be holding on to next year, um, even though that the state has an eight-billion-dollar surplus. Um, and, and again, if we looked at all of the, all of the GEA, all the times that they, that the state has withheld money from our taxpayers, it would, you know, the, the overall total would be probably near twenty million dollars, I think, right, Brian? Is it, if you add up all the GEAs over the last five, over the last eight years?
If you add up all the GEAs, it'd be about forty-five million.
Forty-five million dollars. So, and again, we know we're not gonna get that money from, uh, back from eight years ago. We understand that, and it's, it's too bad, 'cause it, it really is Webster taxpayer money. Um, but for right now, moving forward, there is this, you know, this four-million-dollar, four-million-dollar fund that we're not getting, um, that, that is really rightfully, should be back in our community. Um, and I know that other districts would probably tell you the same thing, if their GEA was fully restored, and I know that Senator Nizolio had really worked hard to fully restore that, if we had our four million dollars, um, it really does have an impact on, on tax rates and tax levies, and we'll be talking about that in a, in a few moments.
And overall, left in the state, there's still a little, a shade over four-hundred million left amongst all the districts, um, left in GEA restoration out there. So if you compare our four million against that, we're, we're a full one percent. Um, and that's pretty amazing, considering there's about seven-hundred districts, um, that are still affected by it, that were one percent of the total. So the tax rate increase scenarios, looking at a, a couple different scenarios. Um, first, we wanted to take a, another look at what our, our valuation, our district-wide valuation would be. And so for fourteen, fifteen, I have what the valuation increases were, um, for each of the four towns that make up our district. Then compared it to a, what I think is a likely scenario of what's going to happen. Um, against the twenty-five-year average, the twenty-five-year median, a five-year average, and a ten-year average, um, I ran a bunch of different forecast models to try to predict what would happen. And those came out actually, uh, on the high side, um, you know, in the threes, based on past historical data, which, you know, for this, I, I think it makes sense to trend more what's happened lately, rather than across the spans, 'cause everybody knows that we have expanded a little bit more on the exponential side than the linear side when it comes to the area in growth throughout the nineties and early two thousands. So what-
Brian?
Yeah?
Just for clarification, the highlighted in yellow, one-point-nine, one-point-nine, negative point-seven-seven, and one-point-oh, those are the growth rates in assessment and total assessment, right?
Correct, growth and valuation assessment.
So, okay. So, 'cause when you talk about, you know, many times, you're being very conservative here, because there have been times when the growth rate has been in the threes-
Correct.
Or in the twos, right? 'Cause you can see the twenty-five-year average for, for Penfield and for Webster's is four-point-two and three-point-nine-three percent growth each of the years in that twenty-five-year span. Okay. Just wanna make sure. Thanks.
So what would our tax rates look like with three different, uh, levies, going out at the cap and being below the cap? What are, using the likely scenario and those levies, uh, what would it do for our tax rate and what would the tax rate increase be? Using those likely, uh, assessment rates, you know, or tax increases below two at one-point-nine-eight, um, and so on and so forth going down.
For a point of clarification, again, our tax cap this year, um, is three-point-nine-two on the levy, correct?
Correct. Right, and, um, thank you for reminding me. Previously, we were at four-point-oh-one, and because with the building aid number coming out a little higher than what we had anticipated, um, that directly influences the formula, so I took that number, replaced it with what I had projected, and that reduced our cap. Um, I've gone ahead and we, I've reconfigured it with the comptroller, um, so that they have the most up-to-date information.
And Brian, um, in terms of the recommendations from the New York State Comptroller, uh, Comptroller DeNapoli, um, what has his recommendation been to taxing entities of the, um, in, in terms of the tax cap?
They've come out at, at a couple different, um, ways, seminars and, uh, press releases saying, you know, it's, you know, good financial planning for you to, to be at your cap, 'cause otherwise, you're leaving money on the table, and that's money you're never gonna recoup, and that, that's just not the way you wanna run any kind of entity or business. Any chance you can have to get a revenue, you wanna get it, um, that works in any kind of scenario. So that has been the, the main theme, um, to, you know, it's fiscally prudent and financially beneficial, uh, for you to do that, 'cause you will not, you will not be able to carry it over. Lot of that came out of, um, the clarification a couple of years ago. In the tax cap formula, there was that provision for available carryover. They clarified what is available carryover, um, and it compares to the number before exemptions. Remember, a couple of years ago, when TRS and ERS rates were skyrocketing, and you can add a certain percentage of that onto the back end of your tax cap formula, um, if you didn't go to that full amount, it was fairly clear that you could bank that and carry it over to the next year. Well, a significant amount of districts could do that, but they clarified and said, "No, it's not against your actual number with your exemptions, it's every, it's your number before exemptions." So in essence, it eliminated carryover for anybody that, anybody but, um, districts that had a failed budget and had to go back to the starting point. 'Cause no matter what mathematically, you couldn't get below that number. Because no matter what mathematically, you couldn't get below that number-
Okay.
-to get carryover.
Thanks.
So it, it came out of that change where he said, well, carryover's gone, you might as well just go to the cap.
You, you leave money on the table is what you're saying.
Right, because it, so what you do at the end of fifteen-sixteen, where you set your levy, for fifteen-sixteen, that number is your base point for sixteen-seventeen. So whatever that delta is, or may be, you're starting yourself off for the next year in the formula, at your starting point, lower than what you could have been. So then, going forward, every single year, you are lower than what you could have been because of that, that change. And it would vary depending on your growth factors. We're at two-point-one-eight percent on our growth. I expect that to, to happen for a couple more years, to be around two due to what's going on in the community. So, I mean, that would compound it further. And so every year, you're losing that delta, and every year, that delta widens as the Consumer Price Index goes up and as our growth factor goes higher.
So it'd have a negative impact on our reserves down the road?
Right, I mean, because it's that much less money that we would have to count on.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Question, Brian?
Yeah?
What kind of reserves would we use this year?
This year, we're using our debt service reserve to a little over seven-hundred thousand dollars to offset some of our, our bond payments for capital projects. We are planning on using that, and we're using all of it.
No others?
No others at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So for your reference of what going to the cap would be, what is that amount in dollars on the levy? And what does that raise over what this current base year is for your reference? The difference between three-point-nine-two at our cap and three-point-seven-five is about a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. When it goes to three-and-a-half, it becomes a little bit more in the three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar range, difference between cap and three-point-five. What does our history look like? Our tax rate history looks like a roller coaster. Bottoms out, and you'll see later, if, take a mental picture of this, this image right now, because, and mentally, we're going to overlap it, because technically, it was too grainy to overlap it on the presentation for you. So you see really, in oh-four, oh-five, we kind of top off. Oh-five, six, it peaks, and then we start to come down. And then in ten-eleven, eleven-twelve, we, we start to tick back up a little bit. Over the last decade, if you look at our tax rate change history, we're almost even for tax rate increases versus tax rate decreases, kind of a net neutral over that time period of raises to, to decreases.
Brian, as we look at that, as we look at that slide, if we look back, one, two, three, four, five, eight, nine, if we look back almost over the last decade, we have five years, in the last nine years, I, as I look at that, we've had, five of the last nine years, our taxes have gone, our tax rates have gone down, correct? Am I reading that graph correctly? And, and then the other four years, it was, you know, one, looks like one-seven, point-two, three-one, and two. Three-one and two, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Something like that, so, all right. But again, I think one of the points that I think is worth clarifying, or at least emphasizing, is the fact that five out of the last nine years, we've had a tax rate decrease. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Today is lower than it was ten years ago.
You are correct.
So the tax rate in two thousand four-five was twenty-one-fifty-seven, according to the previous slide.
Yes.
Twenty-one-fifty-seven versus, this is the true, I think this is probably the true tax.
This is the true tax, yep.
Twenty-one-fifty-seven, and the true tax rate now is twenty-one-sixteen. So in the last eleven years, we've had a two, a true tax decrease of forty-one cents. True tax.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly, I don't believe the value of, that our properties have been reassessed. So our property values have been the same for that whole period of time. So the only changes that we would be experiencing in our tax bills would be an effect of the equalization rate. Is that correct?
There would be an equalization rate effect, but what the main effect is, is what new is coming on to the rolls during that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, the growth. But, I mean, ten years ago, it was twenty-one dollars per thousand, and now it's less, you know, twenty-one. Twenty-one-point-five-seven and twenty-one-point-one-six.
Correct.
So, people are paying less.
I, I think it, it says an awful lot about, about our community and the fact that we've been able to have these, I mean, we were the fastest, and we probably still are the fastest-growing community in Monroe County, but certainly, we were one of the fastest-growing in, in Western New York. But it says an awful lot about our town government, our village government, and certainly, the school district in the sense of creating a stable economic environment that is bringing new businesses in. So we have this incredible growth, which then stabilized, helps stabilize tax rates, not only in the district, but also in the town and also in the village. Would that be a fair assessment to say?
That would be, yes.
Okay.
This, this slide is very helpful, thank you.
Now, just going to go back, grab the mental picture as we go forward of this one. Because now, we're going to just look real quick at the operating aid pattern of what happens. Because there's a direct correlation between state aid going up and the tax rates going down. The more state aid, the less local money needed. Rates go up when the state aid gets taken away. So if you look right now, oh-six, oh-seven, oh-seven, oh-eight, that is when we got those large increases in foundation aid. That's when the tax rate started to fall, because we could cap the levy, because we were getting more and more aid. As you see, right in eight-nine, nine-ten, our operating aids crashed. The foundation aid got frozen, and the GEA came on board, so we took a hit. That's when the rate started to trickle back up, because the state aid gets taken away, it falls on the locality to make it up. So, you know, all the growth we had, the expansion, the additional programs, the, you know, the two-high-school shift in the early, early part of the decade, all that stuff we were adding, you know, you lose the state aid, you want to keep it going, that unfortunately, and, and the way school finances is run, will have to get transferred to the localities. And so that's what you're seeing. If you put them over each other, you'd see as one comes down, the other goes up, and it's a definitely inverse relationship.
So, Brian, I'm sorry, but the, as we, as we look at that, you're exactly right. I mean, again, this is why it's very important for all school districts, but we'll just focus on Webster. But when, when the state holds on to your GEA, okay, when they hold on to four million of our dollars, and our foundation aid is basically flat, why that, that creates a stressor toward, you know, towards a community or towards a school district. One of the other things that I think it's very important to mention is that in eight-nine, nine-ten, and ten-eleven, when the state economy was tanking and our aid was going down, you can see the operating aid going down dramatically, which is also when the GEA started. We also eliminated close to a hundred positions within this district, and we also eliminated certain programs such as the enrichment program. So it is important for our community to remember that, you know, just six years ago, we had to really tighten, tighten our belts, and we've continued to do that as well. But it is very much tied to that, to that aid piece. Thanks.
And actually, last December, I went to a school business management workshop, and the Assistant Comptroller, Gabe DeMayo, presented, and he had a wonderful slide across the county, across New York State with the information showing that exact intersection. And I was actually quite surprised that they did that from a state government perspective, showing the municipalities, the effect that really, local government was capping itself as state aid and support was increasing throughout the process. So I, I found that to be quite interesting, and when you compare it against our numbers, the same, same trend happens. So that takes us into where are we spending our money for fifteen-sixteen? Really, we have these major areas, our central services, our instruction, our transportation benefits, our community service, our debt service and transfers are some major areas of how we have to report our budget to New York State. So when you take a look at our central services, that includes all the back-office operations and our facilities support. Really, the largest chunk of this sub-budget is our operations and maintenance. And you'll see the exact dollar figures on the next slide. But I always like to visualize what, what are our big cost drivers? When we talk about back office, you know, we have eleven different buildings to maintain for eighty-eight-hundred kids every single day, and that's quite an undertaking. It's quite a large amount of square footage, so our operations and maintenance is a, a large part of that. When we get, talking about the back office, you see our, the next largest portion of that that we have to pay is our commitment to Monroe one-BOSEs and the administrative costs when we talk about our back-office operations. Everything else is in the single digits, and the highest is what we do for HR and business support at six percent. So those, those numbers for you overall, this portion of the budget is a little over fifteen million dollars, the largest part of that being our operations and maintenance. It's, the reduction that it's showing over last year is really a major cost shift that I've mentioned before, and I'll point out, it's right here in finance. That has a lot to do with the philosophical difference of how the BOSEs bill gets split up. For instance, in the fourteen-fifteen budget, out of the business BOSEs budget, we are paying for our special education, IEP Direct software. We are paying for health and safety issues through BOSEs that support our student management system, our data certification. All that was being paid for, as well as our sub-call-in system was being paid through by the business office, and all of our computer, a large chunk of our computer equipment, our computer supplies, our copiers, and all of our network support through BOSEs. All of that was being paid through the business BOSEs budget. And what I've done is just redistribute that, those costs to really the program that they're part of. So the network support will be in the computer instructional technology. So that's why you see this, this money coming off from here, from the, this area, and it's now being allocated to a more budget-appropriate area to show the true expense of what that area is. So our instructional budget for all the little different areas, our K-12 program falls right in here, fifty-four percent is the bulk of it, with special education being the next largest percent at twenty percent. But really, everything else we do is a small slice of the instructional budget overall. The bulk of our work is, is K-12, and that's where you'll see a majority of it. And I've given you a three-year history, a more detailed breakout of where our variances are and what's happening across all, all areas. As a specific note to you, the building budgets are all included in here. Building budgets are, all work within instruction. So as we've broken those out earlier for you to give you a sense of where all the buildings are and their expenses are, they are all in instruction or library and educational television or supervision. Their budgets fall within all these categories. Sure.
Why is there a huge jump from two thousand fourteen-fifteen to two thousand fifteen-sixteen in summer school?
That had been, we have to report summer school separately.
Okay.
And our BOSE summer school bill comes in separately. That was caught up in the, in the wash, shall we say, with, in a different BOSEs budget code. And to make it, for ease of reporting, I've broken that out. That, we're spending, you know, not a dime more than we normally do. It's just, I, I like to-
You show it somewhere else?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It's actually right up in here in our total instructional budget.
Okay.
That's where it was last year.
Okay, thanks.
And then some of our other areas we've gone over before, our transportation, our recreation program, which is the Webster Aquatic Center, and our continuing ed programs that, as we call recreation, our total benefits, our total debt service, and our total transfers, that's our required federal payment for summer school, plus the hundred thousand dollars we are looking at doing in the small capital projects on a year-to-year basis. For a total budget of a hundred-and-fifty-seven million, eight-seventy-nine, seven-ninety-eight, five-point-four million increase or three-point-five-eight percent budget-to-budget increase. Another way I like to look at, what do we spend our funds on? Overall, salaries and benefits are our highest areas, as well they should be, because we're in a human capital business. We don't have plastic, we don't have metal that we're taking in and producing something. We're in a people-centered business, so salaries and benefits will be our, our largest expenditure, along with then pensions, which has shrunk this year due to the reduction in the TRS contribution rate. We've found some savings you might have seen in years past, where this is a higher overall percentage of what we're paying, but the TRS is reducing contribution rate about twenty percent. So that's a savings for us, which unfortunately is being picked up by our healthcare costs. It, the other thing that also I like to use this is, it's striking that everything else we spend on is such a small portion of our overall expenditures. We talked about our, our energy consumption, really is, is a small percentage overall. What we use for fuels, for diesel, for our buses, and for our B&amp;G support, our, our equipment there. Our textbooks is less than one percent of our overall budget. What we spend on student accident insurance and also casualty insurance, less than one percent of our entire budget. And same thing with overall with supplies for, that's supplies across every building and every department, less than two, about two percent of the entire budget. So what's in and out from our changes from three-twenty-six, what we had hoped to do compared to what we think we can do based on the state aid figures we received? Our priorities include in the budget ranked in order, on the left-hand side, is all the special education program commitments that came from the audit, our commitment to the ICT program. Those were number one. Number two, which actually should be one A and one B, because the SL, English Second Language Positions are a federal mandate, and we have to do them regardless. So you almost can make that one A and one B. Third on our list was the, for us, it's a one-point-oh FTE, although it will be shared with the town, but for us, it's a new person, so I refer to it as a one-point-oh FTE for a school resource officer. Number four was getting back two enrichment specialists. Currently, we're at two, we were originally at seven several years ago, trying to slowly bring back some of those cuts that have been made and restore that there. Department and building requests was number five. A lot of the buildings had really been shaved down to the point where, you know, it, it was impacting what the kids had access to. And so we really wanted to, you know, improve the school libraries, the classroom libraries, build back- build back and restore the enrichment programs and the cultural arts programs at every building. Those have been cut in half last, several years ago as well, and restoring that to what it was five years ago across every building. Six was $35,000 for conference and evaluation tools as the sixth highest priority. And then seven was, since it is of limited costs and a very beneficial program for both us and the intern, is partnering with a local college to have two psychologist interns full-time to help alleviate and free up some staff to be able to do some more things for us. So those were the priorities that we ranked as a group. And then we also ranked what was removed from the budget. First thing was more of a, kind of a fund balance thing. $20,000 for tuition expenses was removed. For several years, we have been running in the red paying for foster care tuition. And we've been paying for that out of our district fund balance. We'd be at X, but it really cost us Y, and we just would suck that up every year. So we were trying to get some of that back and right-size what our actual expenditure to budget is on that. Projected going forward, you know, we could take the hit a little bit more going forward and back off of that number a little bit. Number two was, we did have some ambitious plans with our instructional technology budget. We pared that down considerably just because of not knowing what's going on with the Technology Smart Bond Act. And so we could back off that for another year. Reducing then the summer and the year-long technology help by the $50,000 we had talked about, removing that until we know more. Removing 3.0 FTE from the technology budget as well. But we might need to further discuss that due to the Smart Bond Act. If that's something, depending on our discussions of where we're at with the levy, could we add some positions back? Then what turned out to be, as we took a look at the enrollment numbers a little bit more, why it's, it really would be on the left-hand side to cap kindergarten, but became a removed because it's looking like we could do it already without adding the 1.0 FTE based on what our kindergarten enrollment projections are. That was normally something that would be a priority and be high on our list on the left-hand side. But looking at kindergarten enrollment, we might not need that 1.0 FTE. That's why it's down on our, removed from the budget because we think we can do it with the current staffing based on the enrollment trends.
Full-time equivalent for kindergarten. Traditionally, don't we budget one or two positions in for, you know, additional teachers?
Right, this would be in addition to that solely earmarked for that sole purpose.
Okay.
And not really a one or two additional for an enrollment bubble.
All right, thank you.
So then just as a budget comparison, to kind of give you the same look that we had the last few times of where everything is compared to our 326 presentation to right now, tonight, buildings and grounds and transportation of state uniform, our central services, those back office operations, small deduction, we've actually had another retirement coming through that we've gone back and, coming up in 1516 and taking some additional breakage there. Our community education program is maintained. Our debt service and transfers, remember when I presented for the debt service, I had not applied any more debt service reserve at the initial point in time. And now for 4-9, we're, you know, we're spending 700,000, a little over 700,000 this year. We're backing that off to 450 for next year. So ha, almost cutting in half what we're spending out of that reserve, slowly decreasing our dependence on that. And then also, final, we got the final numbers for our refinancing on our bonds. So that explains the odd number of why it came down a little bit more than 450,000. Building budgets staying the same, athletics, benefits, no changes there.
Does that include the retirees' benefits also in there?
Yes, that includes, when we talk benefits, we're talking healthcare. With this large number, we're talking health, pensions, social security.
Everything.
Everything.
Okay.
So then our changes, and you'll have to forgive me, I left a typo on the ones I copied for you, right here under the pupil personnel services. Your numbers will look different. I was able to catch that before we presented this evening. But we went back and looked at where could we pare down and pull some stuff out in the, you know, our curriculum research and PD section, trimming down by about 26,000. Special education came down from what we initially did. BOSEs had re, I won't say re-released, but their process is a little bit different. They set a general budget, but then the updates come as we go through. And so a lot of the related services weren't set in stone. So I had put a little bit higher, I had projected some of the related services to be at four. They came in at about 2.9 to 3.2. So I was able to shave that percentage down, which on a significant amount of students that brought us back down. Our pupil personnel services coming down a little bit. Our instructional technology, that's removal of all those positions, plus paring down what we had hoped to spend from initial budget presentation on 326. So, you know, we were, we were very hopeful that we would get more GEA back to be able to go through with a more robust technology plan in 1516. Our instructional and supervision coming down. So our total draft budget overall went down 1.6 million, shaving a little over 1% off by making those changes and sharpening our pencils a little bit more on some of the other areas. So looking ahead, right now, this is based on 1415 data, what our county tax rate is. We're second in the county, we have the lowest true value tax rate according to Monroe County School Boards Association data booklet. This won't change. We're still going to be number two based on, I know what these, what the other districts are leaning towards, and it will not change our standing as number two. Fortunately, I know who's number one, and nobody's ever going to catch them due to their unique situation and tax base. So this will still be number two in the county when it comes to lowest tax rates among school districts.
That districts should try to go as close to the cap as possible. Our ranking will pretty much stay constant.
Right, because, I mean, we get to you when we can get to you because, you know, of when the timing was. So really great news. We should be having bids in probably next month for the building envelope part of this project to see where we're at then, so.
Can we entertain a motion then to accept the bid for roofing? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have in front of us board members, a donation from the Alice and Edwards Johnson Foundation donating $7,500 to Schlegel Road Elementary School to be used for the purchase of physical therapy and occupational health equipment. Francine, would you like to tell us a little bit more?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I would. Good evening, everyone. Can I just give you kudos, Brian? That was a nice report. You gave Eric Blask a whole bunch of algebra problems he's going to be planning out, so it's kind of nice. Yeah, I think he's going to be working on that. So I am excited, and I was so excited to have Brian share the moment with me when we received the, another gift from the Johnson Foundation. And so it's beyond significant to me why that they gave this grant this time, the 7,500. They really wanted to recognize the hard work of our physical therapists and our occupational therapists with our students that have a lot of challenges with mobility. And so when you look at this 7,500, what that's going to do is help benefit our kids that are growing. And so it's a little bit of a taller standard or the chairs that they're sitting in to be able to accommodate because the kids are growing and the materials that we have when we started out when kindergarten age, and now the kids are moving into that third, fourth, and fifth grade. So I was so pleased when the foundation approached us. They knew that the occupational therapists and physical therapists had that need, and they wanted to help out. So kudos to Jennifer Clegg, Kathy McKenna, Katie Anthony, and Ashley DeWitt because they have connected so well with our families. And because of that, that's why this foundation recognized us once again. So it's exciting for us to receive this, so hopefully you guys will accept this donation.
Any questions for Francine? And may we entertain a motion to accept this donation? Thank you. Second? Thank you, Paul. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And we thank the Alice and Edward Johnson Foundation very, very much. They've been very generous to us.
Responsible for the playground, very much, yeah. We still have lots of good things in that playground going on, so it's exciting for the kids. Thank you very much.
Okay, as we move on, board members, we are looking at some contracts. The first one is on the ESA contract. Carm, would you like to give us a little highlight?
Sure. So the ESA contract, it's a four-year contract. This unit includes all of our teacher aides and our teaching assistants as well as our school nurses. It's a four-year contract with a wage increase of 275, 275, 295, 295 over those four years. There is an increase in the healthcare contribution for new members as well as the increase in the vesting time. It will now take 20 years of full-time continuous service for someone to be able to vest into the retiree healthcare. Those are, we continue to lead the way in the county with, in terms of healthcare employee contributions. And we were also, in terms of vesting, we are sort of setting the state, setting the standard across the county for that. And in terms of overall salary increase, we are below, certainly below the average for that as well. It's a four-year contract. It was approved by the unit unanimously, which I don't ever remember that happening in the six years that I've been negotiating contracts. So it was 145 to zero. So we were very pleased with that, and I think they are very pleased as well. So my recommendation is that the board also ratify this four-year contract.
Questions from the board? I will point out that it is a major healthcare concession. With that being said, may we have a motion to ratify the ESA contract? Thank you, a second? Thank you, Paul. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We also are looking at our transportation contract. Carm, you want to give us a little highlight there also?
Sure, Mike. This is a, another four-year contract, and we have, this is more of a four-year contract extension. They were already at a 70-30 healthcare contribution from their previous contract. And their wage increase, 25, 25, 25, 275 for the four years. And I know Mr. Freeman and Mr. Shees also negotiated some language regarding recruitment of bus drivers so that we can continue to recruit the highest quality, but also to make sure that we have a nice pool of drivers as well as incentive for attendance. So again, I, our recommendation from Mr. Freeman and I and Mr. Shees is that the board approve this four-year contract.
Questions from the board?
When you're saying the healthcare, as you did in the ESCA group, that is for the new employees, right?
Nope, that is, actually, the 70-30 has been in place for four years now. For new, for employees that were hired after 2011.
It's employees that come out of the payroll.
Correct, from 2011 on.
Which is, that's good. It's been going good. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Other questions? Then may the board entertain a motion to approve the transportation contract? Thank you, second by Mike. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We have one more piece of board business, which is an approval of a personnel agreement, which normally would be in consent agenda, but we moved it out. So Carm, real quick.
So this is a personnel agreement that we have discussed in executive session, and my recommendation is that the board approve this agreement.
May we have a motion, please, to accept the approval of the personnel agreement? Okay, Sue and Anne is a second. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sue, we have second readings of two policies.
Yes, the first one, 3114, employment of related individuals, and the change is only the name of the position. Previously said Chief Human Resource Officer, and now says Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, just to make that clarification. So that's the only change on that one. And do we want to vote on them together?
Board, can we vote on them together?
Second reading for both. And the second one is just to update, we used to have PDAs, not meaning public displays of infection, but PDAs, the electronic device. And we do not have them anymore, so with, it was suggested that remove, remove it from the policy and just take out the language around that and just leave it as cell phones. And so that's the only change there. So the content didn't change, just the labels changed.
Any questions from the board? May we entertain a motion to accept the revised policy readings? Okay, Paul and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move into board reports. We'll start with Paul. Anything to report on your school liaisons?
I don't, I pass.
Nothing at this point.
Oh, they have a family fun night. What is today? Oh, next Friday, okay. Family fun night's next Friday. Right. A mother-son breakfast on May 3rd in celebration of Mother's Day. And the next PTSA meeting is May 12th.
Okay, I'm just going to go over our calendar for the next two weeks. This Saturday, we have Community Arts Day. I know a number of us will be there. On Monday, Plank South has a PTSA meeting. I know Mike DeeDee would like to attend that. Friday, April 17th, you're doing the Schlegel Family Night?
I didn't say I was going.
Oh, well, it's-
Actually, we're going to be at a time.
Okay. Would anyone like to attend that?
I'm sorry, save the game.
It's Friday, April 17th. It's Schlegel Family Fun Night.
Is it going to be at the school? Yes.
Is this working? Yeah, it is. So it's at the school?
Yes.
Okay. So if somebody could stop by, that'd be great.
Sure, I can stop by.
On Monday, April 20th, is a DeWitt PTSA meeting at 6:30. 6:30 on Monday, April 20th.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And a special announcement, on Tuesday, April 21st, the board has a BOSEs budget and election at 8 o'clock in the morning. So we do need a quorum. I'll be able to make it, Sue can make it, and we need, we need another person. It's 8 o'clock in the morning.
It's like a 10-minute.
Okay, we will have a, it's on April 21st, it's a Tuesday.
Right here.
Yep, I can do it.
It'll probably be up in Carm's office.
I can do it.
Okay. And then on the 21st, we also have a Schlegel PTSA meeting at 6:30.
Actually, that's a planning meeting.
Oh, it's a planning meeting, so it's-
Yes, so we don't need to go to that.
All right, and then we have a board meeting on the 23rd, and we'll continue the calendar after that. All right, we'll move on to our Monroe County School Boards Association. Sue, anything on steering?
Next meeting, May 13.
Okay. Legislative, Tom?
I'll start and ask, because I have a little bit late, but I will start this off. And Sue, if you'd fill in any blanks that I might be missing here.
Okay.
There was a significant discussion about the state budget, and a lot of things that Brian explained were also repeated by many of the members present about where they came out on either foundation or GEA and what that may mean to their individual districts. There were some interesting aspects of how the legislature voted. In the Assembly, in the Senate, all the senators in our area voted for the budget, but we were- were, actually, there were more folks in the legislature, or the Assembly, I should say, that did not vote for the budget versus those that did. And it was a little bit around, I think, the good points brought up by the teachers and others, that some things needed to be adjusted. Also, the Monroe County School Board Association reviewed their trip to Albany, and I was one of the first ones I've missed in a long time, but it was, explained that it was jam-packed. They had a significant amount of appointments, and it was rapid-fire, and they either met, and Anne represented us very well, and it was, all in all, a pretty good trip. There was some frustration expressed by some of the folks that went for the first or second time, thinking that they'd be able to do a little bit more, but the best thing we can do is relay good information, so that our people are informed when they're representing us on the floor for discussion and bring up good points. Sue, I'll let you do a couple, if you have a couple other things that you may have picked up on.
Well, the legislative report was actually huge.
Yeah.
There's a big discussion on the opt-outs, and that Monday night, there was a forum that I believe you attended about testing. There was talk about lawsuits and trials, and also, an update of the ESEA authorization. There's just a lot of meat here, so why don't we just send the, the report, and you guys can read it? Did you get the minutes yet? Okay, so you have them. So, we'll send them to everyone else, and then, you can read it at your leisure. But, and the one other thing is just that, you know, the budget has passed, but the legislative session still runs till the end of June, and the things that were not addressed in the budget could very well come up, and we really just need to keep our eyes and ears open and advocate when we need to, when, you know, when something wacky comes across the table.
And also, if we can, when we have, I'll call home field advantage. We have the opportunity to go to representatives locally when their local offices to take advantage of that. Those are much more relaxed sessions. There's not the push, because there's, every 15 minutes when you're down there, someone else goes in. Here, you get half hour, 45 minutes to an hour, depending on their appointment schedule, and it's an opportunity to exchange and get into more in-depth discussions of why we're taking the position we are.
Right.
And we take advantage of that.
Yeah, I know we do, because we do need to continue to do so.
So, okay.
Okay, labor relations. Did anybody go to? Is it next? Well, actually, next week is information exchange.
Labor's the 22nd.
Okay. And executive committee, actually, it's coming up.
The 22nd.
Sue, are you going?
Yes.
Okay, and Carm, are you going to go to that? The 22nd, executive committee?
No.
No? Okay, so.
So, on the, they'll be, the budget will be presented that night, looking for budget approval, and the nominating committee will be put.
Putting forth.
Put forth a slate of officers for next year. The budget, actually, let's see, I have the budget for the whole, just in case you're interested. Maybe you're not interested at all. Okay, the budget's going up 0.8%, not a lot of money.
Which is the Monroe County School Board?
Monroe County School Board budget. Our dues is going to go up, oh, this doesn't make any sense. I'm sorry. The budget is going up 2.5%, and our share of it's going up 2.49% from $12,600 to $12,900.
Thank you. I kind of gave you a report, Tom. Do you have anything else from the state?
We do have the opportunity to view the session that was held on the review of the legislative and the budget that was put on by our government relations group, and it was an opportunity to take advantage of it. It's supposedly online, now, so you can just view it for free if you wish.
Thank you. Mike and I did attend the National School Board Association Conference. Mike, do you have anything that you would like to say about that?
What a grueling conference, I tell you. It always amazes me, after going, this is my second conference, going after New Orleans last year, Nashville this year, how we rank and how we sit with other high schools around the country. It's amazing. We are so much in the top percentages around the country, it's unbelievable, that the, so many problems between schools combining in certain districts, the fighting, the lack of monies, the programs cut, it's amazing. You know, Webster's been, how long now, Mike, in the top 100?
In music?
Music.
Ten years.
Ten years. That's amazing. I mean, when we went up to the booth, it's like, they almost hugged us, you know, they thought, what a great job you guys are doing. I think they did hug you, but who knows? Long and short of it is, I spent some time, I'm going to just talk about one of the many classes that we took, and that was on nutrition. And when you, when you hear about what the regulations did to so many lunch programs, 33% of all lunches that are bought in schools today get thrown out in the trash. 33%. You know, I've had lunch at my son's school last year with him here, and I got to tell you, it's absolutely true, that it's get, throw it out. They made some suggestions as far as kids, trying to make them more hungry to go to lunch. They want you to do recess before you go to lunch, so they run around and they get more hungry, and so, they'll eat something that they normally don't. But where they're most concerned is that, if these kids are throwing lunch out, and it's something I said back last summer to make this a priority on my, my agenda, is that, what kind of learning are they having in the afternoon with no energy to think and get through the day of school? So, that was really big. They talked about that. She says, it's amazing that Michelle Obama has taken so much pride in changing the lunches and making them so much better, and then, she kind of chuckled. She's the chief nutritionist, or director of nutrition from Aramark. Some of the things that we're going to face going forward, and that is, let me take a look here. They're looking for more schools probably opting out of the free and reduced lunch program. They said that, right now, if you're an 8% true number, it's pretty easy to, 9 to 15%, there's some creativity you can do, but that still will work. They also talked about tougher audits on the schools. They've gave some leeway, they're going to really get tough, and it's going to be on the directors of food services. And she talked about how it can affect these guys' jobs or girls' jobs going forward if they don't have a great audit going on to the next job or school, it can correct, change their careers. So, a lot of these directors are really, you know, boning up and knowing, trying to figure out what they need to do to make sure they're on track. Let's see, what else do I have? The big thing that I couldn't believe was the amount of smart snacks came out, and what they did was, is she was talked about how grain got diverted from beef, from cattle, to companies that were making smart snacks as far as, for the schools. The problem is, is that because they introduced smart snacks, there's, they can't keep up with the demand to make the snacks, so schools have a good supply of those. The second thing it did was, is they're not enough beef coming forward, so the commodity on beef this year is going to be down, that some schools aren't going to get their allotment of beef in the schools this year. So, that's some of the things, their struggles that they're dealing with and working with. But overall, again, I can go on and on here. I thought it was really a good seminar and something that I think we're all meeting next month on, in May, about what we're going to do and how things, and she did touch on the point of what you said earlier about the grains of opting out, and I'm glad we did that, so that's great. But overall, it was fun. It was grueling, but I had a great time. I got a new hat. I got new boots, and country music is fantastic, so other than that, up to you.